Hello and welcome, welcome everyone to Get to Know the Candidate. I hope that you are having an incredible Wednesday. My name is Aura Vazquez and I'm going to be the host. And as you know, I bring a space where we can get to know candidates, where we can talk to them about their vision, what they do for us to get empowered and get more knowledgeable about different things. And also to ask some questions and build relationships with people that are running for office. So hi Nick and welcome.
Hi there, thanks so much for having me.
Thank you so much for joining us. This is actually the first time that you and I get to be on the same space together and talk. So I want to start by asking you, you know, to tell us a little bit about who you are, you're bringing, what brings you joy, you know, how are you an Angelino? Tell us more about you.
Yes, well, I'm one of those rare breeds. I'm a lifelong Angelino, born and raised in Board District Four, which I proudly now represent. So I was born on the west side of LA. I started my educational career at Kenter Canyon Elementary, which I now proudly represent in Board District Four. And you know, my, this journey for me really began in high school when I started volunteering at a camp I now run. It's a nonprofit camp for homeless kids called Camp Harmony. I'm now the camp director. And that really opened my eyes to the opportunities that presented themselves for kids in LA, but also so many of the barriers that kids who were living, you know, just a few miles away from me were in schools that weren't serving their needs. They didn't have the same opportunities. So I graduated from Harvard College in 2008 and I came back and started teaching at LA Unified. I taught at Markham Middle School at 104th in Compton, where I taught English and English as a second language, and started a soccer team and a newspaper and a baseball team. But also saw yet again, the barriers that were standing between my students and their success. And so to make a longer story short, I ended up suing the school district on behalf of my students, arguing that they deserve better educational opportunities. That really catalyzed an interest in going to law school, which I did. I went to NYU Law and a Public Interest Civil Rights Fellowship. I spent some time at the ACLU and then the Obama White House. Came back to LA where I got elected to the board in 2017. And what a term it's been. We've had superintendent turnover, wildfires, strikes, of course COVID for the last years. Although today marks a very exciting day because I was just at elementary schools. Today, you know, our mask mandate is lifted. We are now recommending, but not requiring masks indoors. So it's a real watershed moment today as we think about the hard work that we've put in in LA Unified to get kids back to a sense of normality.
Yeah, and I really appreciate your bringing this, bringing us to understand more who you are and what brought you to run for, you know, for a school board. And the school board is such an important position for us here in Los Angeles. This is the birthplace really where a lot of our leaders and a lot of our children and the future, you know, are like mentoring and foster. So how do, and I have a lot of questions and I want to invite folks that are watching everywhere to post your questions in the comments so that we can ask Nick. But my question to you is after being in such a, you know, like a hard position, you know, after being in such controversy and a controversial position and being hard to please everyone, like why do you want to run for office again?
Well, I appreciate the question, Ara, because that's, that's the number one question I get. What I'm calling supporters is yes, I'll support you, but why are you doing this again? I love my job. Like you said, I think, you know, not only are school boards and school districts where America's societal battles are being fought right now, but we saw during the pandemic, what a crucial role LA Unified serves in this community as the social safety net of last resort. You know, we ran the largest school-based food relief effort in American history. We served over 150 million meals. We are the largest COVID testing provider in the county. We provided every student with a computer, a laptop, a hotspot with headphones when we realized that we had students who are, you know, trying to study with three or four other siblings in one, you know, bedroom apartments. We have embedded lawyers in communities of schools to help families access key legal services. So the school district, you know, when other government entities can advocate their responsibility to take care of one another, every kid is going to walk through the schoolhouse door. And so I really believe that so many of the things that I'm passionate about, not only education, but housing, social justice, immigration reform, the environment. LA Unified announced that we're going to go fully renewable by 2030. We'll be the largest and first.
Yeah, so exciting.
To do this, yeah, you and I, you know, we've worked on the issues of green space and parks. We have, LA is a park poor area. We have a school in almost every community. We want to open up our schools on nights and weekends for the community. So I just feel like what I'm doing is important, that there's a need for, you know, what I think level-headed, rational folks to be in these positions of influence. And, you know, I think about things through the lens of a, of a teacher, of an advocate, of a kid who grew up in LA, of a lifelong Angelino. And I'm eager to have another term on the board. We also just brought in a new superintendent, Alberto Carvalho, who started a month ago. He comes from Miami where he had been at the helm for 14 years. Miami has really topped the charts on so many things in terms of school district transformation from literacy, numeracy, college growing rates. So I'm also really excited to work over the next few years with the superintendent and hope that the voters will, will have me back for a second term.
And I'm very, I want to congratulate you because I know that LAUSD just passed a curriculum that is going to speak more about the science and climate change and environmental work and also sustainability, which is so important that we start mentoring the next generation of leaders to understand the struggles of our own choices and how this affects our planet. So thank you so much for, for doing that.
Yeah, it's, it's so multi-layered, right? Because you know, as I've often said, and we, when we, when I passed a resolution to create more green spaces and opportunities for kids to be outdoors, someone who called in said, you know, we have to get kids to love the planet we're asking them to save. And I think about that a lot because we're doing a lot around climate change, climate resiliency, climate literacy, but we're also just trying to get kids outside. Because, you know, like that caller said, we, we need to get kids to fall in love with the planet they're trying to save. I'll say to Ara, I know there's a lot of great questions coming in and I'm, I'm not able to respond to all of them, but I'll say, if we don't get to people's questions today, you can email me at info@nickmelvoine.com. That's info@nickmelvoine.com. We'll make sure your questions or comments get responded to.
Yeah, awesome, awesome. So I want to ask you another question that I actually feel myself, you know, quite strongly about. And I'm a former LADWP commissioner and my background is on environmental policy, clean air, clean water, you know, and renewable energy. And weighing the interests, you know, especially when you are in the decision-making is really important. So somebody asked if in weighing parent concerns with union concerns, how do you, how do you deal with that? What, how do you, what are you, the actual question is who does the candidate give more weight to? Like how do, how do you deal with the different interests pulling and pushing when you're trying to create policies that affect all kids of LAUSD?
Yeah, it's such a good question. You know, when I ran the first time five years ago, I had one of those long terms, like the mayor and the city council, the five and a half year term. You know, my, my slogan, which is more than a slogan, was, was putting kids first for a change. And I know a lot of people have grabbed on that. And now everyone from the union to parent, everyone's talking about putting kids first. But it really was that like students are the ones who are disenfranchised in their own decisions until they're 18. Because you do have unions that represent the interests of teachers or our bus drivers, of our principals, all who are important stakeholders. You have parent groups who are advocating for their kids. And we do need more parents, you know, to get involved. And I've been grateful, I think that's one of the silver linings of the last two years is that more parents have realized like we need to sit at the table. But it's really the kids, it's the students. When I get in that decision room, whether that's the board room or when we're just out at schools, we're thinking about how does this affect our students who don't have a say? You know, I'm really proud that since I've been on the board, I'm the only board member who has never abstained in a decision. You know, a lot of, whether it's at the city council or the Congress or the school board, there's a lot of folks who get elected and then abstain on tough issues. I'm really proud that I've never once abstained. I've always voted yes or no, because that's why I'm here. That's what I'm elected to do. I mean, I think that just says something about even with these tough decisions, it's important to put your thumb on the scale. And I've, I've stood alone sometimes, you know, when I thought there was a long-term health deal that didn't do enough to help the district financially and support our teachers, I was the one board member to vote against it. When at the end of the teacher's strike, there was a moratorium on giving parents strong public school options. That was the one board member to vote against it. Because I just, you know, I, I got here to advocate for kids and families and I'll continue to do that. Some days I get to, you know, I get my colleagues to agree with me. Other times I don't, but I've been consistent in who I've been advocating for, which is the kids and families.
Yeah, and sometimes you have to take the not so popular stand. Because at the end of the day, it aligns with your values. And I mean, I can, I can definitely relate to that when, you know, I had to decide, make decisions for 4 million people of Los Angeles related to water and power. And sometimes, you know, the urgency, and I'm sure you, you have dealt with this too. Sometimes the urgency of the problems that we have at hand is tremendous. And weighing all the, and weighing all the variables and who's saying what, it can be extremely difficult. So I have, I mean, as an advocate and as a, as someone that has been in the decision-making process too, I have the most compassion. It's not, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing. So okay, I have, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, I was just saying, I appreciate you saying that too, because you know, there's different hats we've all worn. I wore the hat as a constituent, as a teacher, as a lawyer, as an advocate when I sued the school district and now as a board member. And, you know, I also try not to be ideological about issues. What's right for the district and what's right for kids at the time? And I, I do talk to my constituents. I talk to our various labor partners. I talk to our parents to weigh the decisions that are right for the district. And no, we are, there are a lot of different stakeholders. There are hundreds of thousands of students who are primary constituents, you know, 84% of whom are living in poverty. We also are one of the largest employers in the county. And so we, we think about, we think about making sure that we're, you know, an employer of choice as well and we're supporting our employees. And then also, you know, we're one of the largest landowners in the county and that's why it's been important for us to think about renewable energy and green space. So, you know, it's not as, there's usually not just a simple lane that we're playing in. That's one of the things that makes the job so dynamic is we're thinking about all these varied interests. Most importantly, of course, having a strong educational opportunities and strong academic outcomes for the kids of LA.
Absolutely. And I mean, I want to move on more towards what, what is it that you want to do coming, you know, moving forward? We just went through such an incredible time together through the pandemic and COVID and having to deal with this in so many ways. And people, you know, I have sat in your board meetings where people call and complain that, you know, they have to use the mask. And two callers later, people complained that you're taking off the mask, they, you know, the man, the mask mandate. So I, and I see a lot of comments about that here on the backend. And I wanted just to ask you, what do you say to people now that you are actually started this talk saying that, you know, the mask mandate is over? So how do we reassure people that we, that LAUSD and you as a board member right now and a candidate and a future board member, if people vote for you, can, how do we reassure them that you're going to do what's in their best interest?
Yeah, I appreciate the question and you hit the nail on the head, Ara, in terms of just how polarizing this issue is. You know, we get a lot of emails and calls from folks and the subject line is follow the science. And then some of the emails say that means get rid of masking. Some of that means, you know, keep masking. And it's been difficult for two years now when our controlling public health entities, the county, the state, the CDC have said different things at various times. You know, we made the painful decision to close schools in March of 2020, when at the time we thought that would help, you know, as we all remember, flatten the curve. And here we are two years later, still trying to figure out what's best for our, our diverse student populations. I have been consistent for some time now in saying that we should be following our county health partners. LA Unified is many things. Like I said, we're the, you know, food bank and food basket of this region. We're also a school district. We are the largest, second largest transportation provider behind Metro. We're not a health department. The county has a health department, the state has a health department. And we should be following their guidance about when we should have opened schools, what we should do with masking. And it was only last Monday that we were even given the green light to remove masks. I had said before then that we should follow the county and the state and I would have liked us to move to optional masking last Monday. We did have to negotiate with some of our labor partners, which we did relatively quickly. And so a week and a half after the county lifted the mandate, today we are lifting ours. And I want to stress too, because I was just at schools, that, you know, this is still, there's still a recommendation for masking. We know a lot of folks, including some people who are commenting here, are ready to take those off yesterday and we respect that choice. We also know that others want to keep their masks on, whether they're adults or students. And we, we respect that choice too. You know, we have had optional masking outdoors for a little while now and I've seen still a lot of students and staff who are wearing their mask. We're not going to be in masks indefinitely, but we understand that there's different levels of comfort. We have other safety standards like our weekly testing, like ensuring that every adult is vaccinated on the school campus, like our air filtration systems. But I am gratified that one, we're following the county and the state. Two, we have switched to it being a choice. And three, that it is a sign that we are, at least some of this is in our rearview mirror and we're able to keep kids safely in school where they belong. Because the last thing I will do in my tenure is close schools again. Kids need to be in schools and we need to do everything to keep them there. Masking is, is still one of those layers of protection, but I'm grateful that we've been told that kids can, kids who choose can safely remove those masks as of today.
I want to move on from more of your, your current role as a, as a board member, but maybe talk about you as a candidate. And maybe you can walk us through, and I'm a fellow candidate too. I ran also in 2024 city council, so I can imagine what you're going through right now. But walk us through what is a day in the life of a board member that is, you know, a candidate for reelection, to get reelected. So tell us a little bit about what happens. Because I think a lot of people watch, watch, you know, House of Cards, The Wire. You know, that is, that is a very romanticized idea of what it's like to run for office and the drama and, you know, and, and all that. But I think in reality it's very different. So it'd be great if you could just tell us what's the day like for you running for office?
People should watch Veep if you actually want a more realistic. I will say though, especially over the last few years, you know, Veep is the one that resonates. But no, and thank you Ara for your service and running as well. You know, so it's also different running as an incumbent. Just because, you know, my, my day job is being the vice president of board and that takes precedent. And I am, there's a lot going on with mask mandates, with our new superintendent, with the budget, with summer school and summer programs, with new dual immersion programs that we're creating, with thinking about the fall and the school calendar and vaccinations. I know there are some questions coming in. So it's interesting because, you know, I don't like campaigning as much as I do governing and I really like my job on the school board. And so every time.
I don't think a lot of people like campaigning naturally.
Yeah, well, you know, because I'd rather be doing the job that I'm now asking people to give me again. So, but you know, so we still have, the bulk of my responsibility is still being on the school board. I also, like I said, still run a nonprofit camp for homeless kids. We did our first full sleepaway session for a few hundred kids last month over President's Day weekend. But then on the campaign trail, I'm out, you know, meeting voters. I'm trying to get endorsements. I've been thrilled to get the LA County Federation of Labor, Stonewall Democratic Club, Planned Parenthood of LA, Mayor Garcetti, Mayor Villarreal. You know, going through the, the, the community to get the support of various entities. Also raising money, you know, as you know well, the unfortunate reality of politics right now is you just have to raise a lot of money. So you're doing those dialing for dollars. And that's actually where you get the most, those questions that I alluded to earlier, which is why are you doing this again? So I do spend time on the phone trying to raise money, mostly, you know, from individual donors. We're doing some events. We're starting to do more fundraisers and meet and greets. Some of them, you know, were on Zoom, but now with changing health conditions, we're thrilled and I'm excited to do more of those in person. So that's a lot on evenings and weekends. So yeah, there, there's a lot. I mean, today was a combination of visiting schools, being on local news spectrum and KGLA 5 about the mask, mask being lifted, the mask mandate. Doing this, I have, you know, some Zoom meetings, some in-person meetings. So I do like the excitement, but you know, it's, it's trying to connect with voters. This is also the first time that the mayor and the school board seats, at least for this cycle, will be on the June and November ballot. So it's much higher turnout. We know that a lot more people will be voting and so we need to reach those people, many of whom don't usually vote in these local races. So that's, you know, that's what we're doing right now as it gets closer to June. We'll be out there knocking on doors and, you know, communicating my message and also just encouraging people to vote and get involved in local elections, school board, city council and the mayor.
I want to ask this question, I think it's so perfect for this time. And what is something that the candidate has been wrong about and now sees different? Is there something that you can reflect on?
How much, yeah, how much time, how much time do we have, Ara? You know, I think.
We have about seven other minutes, so keep it short.
I know, you know, it's interesting. One of the things I think about a lot and it's become kind of like a mantra in my office is fall in love with problems, not solutions. And it's something when I'm talking to young people, I've been quoting more recently. You know, I think I came in with a lot of solutions, some of which I think are still the right ones. But it's really, I like this idea of falling in love with problems, the problems of educational inequity, the problems that not every kid has a great local elementary, middle and high school, the problems that we're still not sending, you know, enough kids to college. And then working with the community to find the solution as opposed to coming in and saying, I know what the solution is. The solution is a new middle school or the solution is a new dual immersion program. You know, what, what is the problem? So I think there are, you know, a few things that I came in, these ideas that we had, that we should have socialized and communicated with the, with the community better. And, you know, there are other things that, that we have acknowledged along the way are priorities that I didn't necessarily come in with. So one, you know, just this week, actually, just Monday, we announced that we have launched the largest college savings account program in the country. So I did a press conference on Monday with city council president Mary Martinez, supervisor Holly Mitchell, where we announced a joint partnership where every first grader is getting $50 put in a bank account that they can access for higher education. That was not something that I ran on, but when I came and I realized being in my position that college affordability was the greatest barrier to college access and that we're doing a lot to get kids ready for college, but we still need to make it more affordable, that became a priority of mine. So I'm constantly learning. This is a very humbling job, always adjusting to new, new information. But, you know, keeping my North Star, which is how do we support kids and families? How do we give parents a seat at the table in decisions?
This is why I wanted to have you for an hour, because I think we can talk a lot about other things. But I know, you know, we only have so much time to, for our conversation. A question that keeps coming is around sustainability, gardens, green schools, you know, opening schools in the weekends for, you know, for, for the community to use them as, you know, community parks. So I saw my gardening friend, let me see, he was somewhere in here talking about more gardens for kids. What are some of the plans? I know that LAUSD and/or maybe you in your own capacity, what, what are some of your plans to make sure that schools are more green, have a better environment for children to learn? And they're moving towards a more sustainable way of studying that maybe it's even more outdoors than in the classroom?
Yeah, and I hope too, and this is a great plug. So next Tuesday, March 29th, I chair our committee of the whole at the board and we are going to have a presentation on, on greening schools and outdoor space. It's a combination of a lot of the initiatives that I've spearheaded from community gardens to schools as parks to just greening schools. There's way too much asphalt in our city. And whether you're an elementary school like Werner in Westwood or Reseda, in Reseda, you know, Van Ness in Hancock Park area, every school should have grass. And that means grass for the sake of grass, soccer fields, sports areas. But also we've done a big push with gardens. We've worked with Enrich LA, we've worked with Seats to Plate. And it's definitely my goal to have every school in LA Unified have a community garden. That means removing, you know, bungalows and certain things that have been taking up space. It means getting rid of a lot of that asphalt, partnering with folks like Enrich LA. Like I think I saw Mud join maybe at one point early on around partners who have worked with the district and understand how to navigate the district's bureaucracy to get, to get school gardens. So I really think it's this, you know, my platform, and again, there'll be more on this on the 29th, is around keeping schools open on nights and weekends for the community, making sure that we get rid of asphalt, not only because it's better for the environment, but so kids can play soccer and football and run around. And then have gardens, not only for their aesthetic value, but so kids can learn and get connected to that earth. And then we can actually start using some of that food too. Because actually the sustainability of trying to have, you know, a fully inclusive farm to table, but in our school district is something that I've been working on. I actually had lunch a few weeks ago with Alice Waters, who founded the Edible School Yard and figuring out what, what we can do to connect those dots between the school climate, gardens, and then also what kids are eating and healthier meals.
Thank you so much. And if people, I see a lot of other questions around vaccination and I want to remind folks that I hosted Nick to talk to us about his campaign and his goals in the future. If you guys want to get in touch with him, how can they get in touch with you to ask you? There's a lot of anxiety around vaccine mandates. How can they get in touch with you if they want to? I took a school safety IC also. So how can folks get in touch with you if they want to connect with you in the future? To ask you some questions?
Yep, so you can email me if it's a campaign related question. You can email info@nickmelvoine.com. If it's school board related, you can email bd4info@lusd.net. You can also email me directly, nick@nickmelvoine.com or nick.melvoine@lusd.net. I will say Ara, you know, I don't, I haven't been really watching the questions, but if you mentioned the vaccine, you know, one of the reasons that we've been able to keep schools open, 100% of schools open this year is because of our safety measures, including vaccines. We have a requirement that will stay in effect that all adults, all of our employees must be vaccinated. We have a requirement for students 12 and older to be vaccinated by the fall. There are a few moving pieces with that, right? We have the governor's mandate, which will apply to all schools in California, but only after the FDA has fully authorized the vaccine, which right now is just 16 and older. We have the legislature right now debating various bills. And so the district will be speaking about this more in the coming weeks because we want to have some consistency. Or I should say, I want to have some consistency. And there's the state legislative questions, there's the governor's mandate, and then there's ours. The district's policy right now is that by August, at the start of the next semester, all students 12 and older need to be vaccinated to be in person. Now, I say that with the caveat that there's all these moving pieces and so the district's going to be communicating more and figuring out what makes the most sense for the health and safety of our community, but keeping kids in school. So I think there will be some movement on these questions in the next few weeks and months. Regardless of people's feelings on mandate or not, I will say that vaccines are safe, they're effective. We have inoculations for so many other diseases that have enabled us to get to herd immunity and that are required for kids to show up in school in the state of California and in most states in the country. This goes back actually to George Washington, when he required soldiers in the Continental Army to get inoculated against smallpox, because that was actually a bigger threat at the time than British troops. So this is as American as it can get. We're making sure that students are safe and in school. So more on that soon. Right now, all employees have to be vaccinated, students 12 and older come August. But again, more updates on that soon, given that the state is debating this currently as well.
Awesome. Well, I think our time is up. I know that you have to go. I appreciate so much you taking the time to, you know, have this conversation with us. I'll post this video for folks to, you know, watch it when they can. But I don't know if you want to maybe two minutes, take two minutes to say your last words and say goodbye to our audience?
Well, thank you. First of all, thanks for your service, having run as well and what you're doing right now with DWP and, and your. uh your efforts around schools as parks and green space. I look forward to partnering. Um, you know, I really do feel like we're such a, it's such an inflection point at the school district in the city. COVID has exposed so many in the existing inequalities. It's only exacerbated those inequalities. Um, our public schools are the best lever we have against poverty. They're the e- great equalizer in American society. And whether you're in Brentwood, uh where I grew up, or Watts, where I taught, every kid deserves a high-quality education. That's been the north star of my career as a teacher, as an attorney, as an advocate, and now as a board member. Um, and I really believe in the in the work we're doing, but there's a lot more to be done despite the progress we've made in decentralizing this district and getting more kids to and through college. Um, and again, being that social safety net of LA, we still have not realized the promise of public education in the city. You can't have a great city without great public schools, whether or not you avail yourselves of them. Um, you need the workforce of tomorrow, your neighbors, your home values. It all comes down to the quality of your school. So I hope folks will check us out, nickmelvoine.com. Um, you can learn more about me and our campaign. And most importantly, I hope folks vote. Um, you know, it's our civic duty. This this June, we have the mayor's race, we have my race, we have the governor. I hope people will go out and vote, um let your voice be heard. And in the meantime, check out nickmelvoine.com for more information.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you so much. And I hope that everybody after watching this is encouraged to check out Nick and ask him more questions through, you know, through his email or social media. And also to just connect with him, you know, running for office, it can be extremely hard and to change everything, we really need everyone. So thank you so much for joining us today. And I hope that we get to see you sometime soon. And of course, all the advocates and the beautiful uh parents that joined us today and had so many exciting questions. Thank you so much for joining us. Um, I'm Aura Vasquez and I'm looking forward to see you next week with a new guest and you guys can ask other exciting questions. Have a great day. Bye-bye.
Bye. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Ara.